As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live and digitally recorded, so please know that. We will start with open sessions. Anybody here for open session? No? Okay. Take it away, Ryan.
Alright, so just taking out of order some appointments. We have Roland Jean, who's the building commissioner in the city of Gardner, and now here in the town of Hubbardston. And Rich Germano, who's building inspector, works with Roland. Wanted to come introduce themselves and also receive their appointments tonight. In addition to Darryl Sweeney, who we know already is inspector of wires, and Jim and Presia for plumbing and gas. And then they'll go right across the street and get sworn in via your approval. Roland, if you want to come up and meet the board. So the initial meetings with Roland and his staff were great. We had several introductory meetings, brought Patty over. They've done a great job training Patty on what they believe they need and vice versa. So the communication continues to improve. Obviously, there was a few pickups in the beginning, but in terms of the professionalism of the inspections and the feedback I'm getting from the community, we're very pleased, so.
It's gone very well so far. No regrets whatsoever.
Yeah, so we really want this to work, right? So it just, it's from a regionalization standpoint, for so many different reasons and challenges that we, as a small town, face.
Sure.
I know you probably wouldn't hesitate, but don't hesitate to let us know if there's any way we can improve how we're, you know, as part of this new agreement. I know we've sort of got a lucky first year here, because we've got some grant money that we're working off of. So it's kind of this sort of one-year pilot, but we really want it to work, so.
Ryan has reached out to me and let me know that same thing, anything I need, you know, he's willing to work with us, and I'm sure you people are too.
Yeah.
We're all anxious to make it work.
We are. I mean, you probably know, but there's so many other communities around that are having the same sort of issues right now.
Absolutely.
So if we're able to hook up with the big brother, you know, we'll feel ourselves lucky. So, okay.
And residents should know that continue to call our offices. We have connections. Certain hours that are scheduled, we've actually been able to improve our hours of operation for people to get inspections, so. Call, there's no difference in the service, maybe even a little bit more professional, so.
Alright, so what do you, what do you need?
Just appointments on all of them, to appoint them. It's gonna, the appointment's gonna be through June 30th, 2019, so this year.
Is that the same for all, you know, we have A through H here? Should we just do them all at once?
There are, yeah, right, we can talk about the other ones. So if you want to just do the building, the last one, two, three, four, so E through, yeah, H. Yeah, yeah, those are the ones that you need to do.
E through H?
Yeah, E through H.
Alright, I'll make a motion to appoint Roland Jean, building commissioner. Rich Germano, building inspector. Jim.
Come on.
And Presia.
Presia.
Presia, plumbing, gas, fitting inspector, and Darryl Sweeney, inspector of wires.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes? An animus? Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Just to save you some time, if you head directly to actually.
They have four. Thank you, nice to meet you.
Yep, same here. Ryan, yeah, thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Two. Okay, any other agenda items that you want to get to out of order?
The only one, Zach from Borrego Solar is here. You want to take that one out of order?
Yep. What's up, Zach?
Hey, guys, can you see everyone again?
Yep.
Zach Parkes from Borrego Solar, for the record, here to discuss the 61A waiver of right to purchase. And then after that, happy to chat through the pilot agreement as well.
Do we have an assessed value on the land?
Yes, that's the, that's what the spreadsheet I gave you with the rollback taxes. That is the difference in value. So we were notified of a conversion of the 61 alpha land for the use by Borrego Solar for solar generation. And we've been asked to waive the right to purchase. The town has a right to purchase under 61A, as many of you know, in any of these land conversions. So that's what we're here to speak about tonight. I provided you with the rollback taxes, as calculated by Diane, who's also here to answer questions. If this was waived, those taxes would be paid first before the land conversion happens.
Is this the final step?
From a construction standpoint?
Yes.
Kind of bifurcated from the pilot agreement, from the future taxes, that the island of non-61A land will pay is kind of the next conversation. But in terms of the construction, the prerequisites from the permits, the final, before releasing the building permit, would be the release of 61A and the conversion of land from protected to non-protected.
Sellable?
Yeah, buildable.
So the building, so that, in that process, the building permit has been initiated and signed by Rich, who's our former building inspector, ready to go pending this 61A conversion. So that's where we are in the process. Then we move to the tax agreement and then hopefully for a project beginning.
Did we do this for other ones?
So this is our opportunity to, what?
No, I want, you go.
I don't know.
This is our opportunity, if we want to buy the land or not.
Correct.
And so the fair market value is?
I don't have that number.
Okay. And not, not that we would, but, so this would be an opportunity if the town wanted to buy it and maybe do a resident solar system that the town would own. But obviously, we don't have the money to purchase the land, but.
So I did speak with council today about this today. So if they're not selling the land, they're converting the land, then we have, we have the ability to apply to purchase the land, but it's not a, it's not a guarantee. Just because we have first option, that doesn't necessar, that necessarily wouldn't follow through, nor would we have that ability, because it's a conversion, not a sell. So if they were selling the land, that would be true, we could buy it right now. If, you know, under the conversion rules, it would be.
They still own the land with this converting.
They're saying, we used to have 61A protection on this land, now we want to convert it to commercial use. So we're giving up the protection for that piece of land. Because we're doing that, under 61A rules, you have the right to try and buy it, to put it, to put it as easy as possible. If we were to try and buy it, then other rules would apply. And council said, you should call me, because that's a process. So we'd have to get more info on that.
So we've never had to do this before, that I recall, have we?
First, not, I mean, obviously not under my.
No, I know, I'm just trying to remember this.
They may not have been on the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So to get out of 61A, if I'm correct, you either pay the last five years' taxes, or you can start paying, like if there wasn't a time constraint, someone could start paying the taxes for the next five years.
They wanted to take it out.
Slowly.
Mm-hmm.
And then they wouldn't have to go to the town, right?
That's right.
There would be no, right, the town wouldn't have a right of first refusal in that case.
Yeah. And in this case, you wouldn't be matching the value of the land, you'd have to be matching the value of the lease. Which is quite a bit more than what you see on that paper. Right, Zach?
Happy, happy to pay it.
So what is the plan? Was, I guess, why we got you here, as far as, you know, assuming everything moves forward tonight?
Assuming a release tonight, we'll work with the building department to get the building permit released, get that appeals period through, the building permit behind us. And that should put us in early February, not the best time to start construction on a project.
How about conservation and all that?
That's all done, yep. So my thought would be, we kind of basically pull everything out, so there's no more steps, even semi-steps that we have to take. And then basically wait for the spring to start our land clearing, our grading and our construction. There is an offhand chance, if we can get the utilities, similar to what we were talking about earlier, to pull up their interconnection schedule. We'll do the land clearing and the grading in the winter. It'll be a little sloppier, but at least that'll let us go out and start actually constructing the facility in April, we'll call it.
Do you, do you have any deadlines relative to your credits or anything else?
Nothing, just because the, the SMART program has just opened.
Yeah.
We have eighteen months to finish. We have no intent to wait that long. It's been about two and a half years we've been developing the project, so we're chomping at the bit to get going. The weather, just the timing and the seasonality didn't work out great for us right here. So that's why we're in between starting immediately or starting in April.
Using any, using any local firms, or are you bringing people from further away?
It's all pretty local. I'm not on the construction side, so I don't know exactly who we're using, but they're all Massachusetts firms for sure. And obviously, it costs a lot of money to bring D8s from across the state, so I'm sure that we're hiring local. I think a civil firm we use out in this area is Borward Guard.
Yeah, I know that very well.
I don't know how exactly local they are. We use them on a previous project in this area. GNR is another group, and Bates is another group that we use for the, for the heavy civil. And there's a fair amount of civil work on this site to get it prepped.
Yeah.
On the electrical side, it's all large-scale electric labor that likely is from the area. Again, it's Massachusetts, central Mass, but I don't know the exact firm we're using for this project yet.
Okay. Okay, I don't have anything else.
Can I just ask one question, Zach, at the, the new contract? So the relationship between Clearview Energy.
Sure.
And Borrego.
Sure.
We're signing a contract with Clearview.
That's right. So Borrego Solar is a developer, contractor and operator of solar facilities. We don't actually own them when they're built. So similar to, you know, any real estate development, we'll flip it to a financial entity. Because we're having this conversation so late in the process here, we've already closed our transaction. Basically, all the project assets have been moved to a project company, and then that project company to a final project owner. In this case, Clearway Energy is NRG, which is the, you know, Fortune 50 company that has a bunch of football stadiums named after them and whatnot. They are the ones that own a lot of the solar projects that we build in the Commonwealth. The ones that we built in Hubbardston previously are owned by NRG. So the actual check for the pilot payment will be coming, not from Borrego, but from the financial entity that owns this project. It's our job to develop it, build it, and we basically get paid like a contractor. And then we get paid to operate the facility and keep it running for twenty years. So, yeah, the way we, we earn money is in big bites for the contract, but we don't actually put the twenty million dollars or so in cash behind these projects.
Okay. So what do you need a motion? So there's two pieces to this. So the first piece we're talking about is the notice to waive the right to purchase. So that requires a vote, and then I would send a letter to the homeowners and to Borrego from the board with a certified vote. That's the first piece.
And what's the second piece before we do the first piece?
What's the second piece before we do the first piece?
Is, the second piece is the tax agreement.
Okay.
With the revenue side of it for us, what's in it for us, so to speak.
So I'll make the motion, I guess, to, to waive the right to purchase 147 acres of our.
A second, huh?
In discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Alright, so the second piece, and uploaded it just recently into your packets, is the tax agreement for the payment of taxes under MGL 5938 HB. You've seen many drafts of this so far, at least one solid draft. These changes were discussed with town council, Borrego, and special thanks to Diane, who's here to answer any of the technical questions. Getting the best value for the town, protecting the town. The most recent delay, the reason why this came up a month and a half ago and then stopped, was discussions over battery storage and energy usage, and whether that was going to be a hypothetical inclusion into the project or an actual inclusion. So if you see the pilot schedule in front of you or the tax schedule, you'll see an increase each year. Small increase, but every dollar counts in a small municipality for the inclusion of that battery storage. So that is the main difference. Town council reviewed this today. Zach saw our copy about thirty minutes ago. Diane and I went over it as well. So of course, ask as many questions and review it as much as you want. The most we'd be asking for tonight is approval for me to sign this on behalf of the town after town council gives its final blessing, and Zach is comfortable with the language for any minor changes tomorrow.
So just so clear again, so, so we're adding the battery storage, which is another commodity, or another piece to your commodity puzzle?
Yeah, when we first started, again, we started developing this project a long, long time ago, before the incentive program was well-defined, and so we started developing it without storage. And then we ended up adding storage through permitting via an amendment to the existing permits, and on our interconnection side, through amendment to our existing interconnection. We still were working with the landowners to make sure they were comfortable with somewhat of a change in scope, but from a kind of big picture standpoint, it's going to look the same, smell the same, sound the same as if it did or didn't have storage. It's basically a large shipping container that's in the middle of the site. That helps the, the solar project itself integrate with the grid. Instead of all the, the power being produced in the middle of the day when we're all at work, we can take some of that peak production, hold it, and then discharge it to the grid when we're all getting home and turning on our ACs or TVs or electric or whatever. So the incentive program provides basically an increase to the incentives that we get when we include storage. And we had it as a if for, we weren't sure if we're going to use it yet. So with the delay, we figured out in that time that we are going to put storage on this project. So we worked with Diane to include it in the agreement. I was not looking for kind of a price agreement, but out-negotiated, and there was a, you know, modest increase to the dollar per kilowatt AC to cover maybe the additional revenue or total value of the system on the ground. But beyond that, it'll function just like a normal solar project, and so will the tax obligation. Every.
Six months?
Twice a year, quarterly? Every, every six months, we'll pay, we'll pay a portion of the schedule laid out in Exhibit B. So it starts off at just over sixty-seven thousand dollars a year, and ends up after the twenty-year period at just over a hundred and seven thousand with the escalator.
Zach, does that energy that's stored have a higher value?
Does not.
It's not?
It's not. It's all about grid integration and just minimizing our impact from a negative standpoint on the grid. Basically, producing or discharging power when it's needed, not when we have it. It's just the inherent problem with distributed generation is intermittency. When the wind's not blowing, when the sun's not shining, what do we do? And so this energy storage is the first step toward really fixing that problem.
And would the solar farm, does it actually clip? You know, you've heard of clipping, when the, the system, but it can't output the electricity because it's too much. Is that, am I correct in saying that?
When there's too much on the.
Like say the wires can't take it, or that the grid can't take it?
Yep, so imagine you've got this project out here. Our interconnection is almost like a pipe. Only so much water can go through that pipe. If we're producing extra, it just gets lost on the system. So that's how, that's just how all systems work. All projects clip a little bit at the peak point of the day, and that helps us get more production in the morning and the afternoon, but.
So that clipping could go into the charging, as opposed to losing it?
That's exactly part of it, yep, that's exactly.
Right, so you don't necessarily get, yeah, but you don't necessarily get any more money per kilowatt hour, but you get more time to, more, you're producing more power that's, you're not wasting, or that's not lost on the system.
No, it just, I don't, I guess, no, it, it takes power that we would be sending. So this is an AC coupled design, so it's, it's on the, it's on the other side of the pipe, if you will. So any clipping still happens. It's just that we can store energy that would be going out to the grid and put it out in a different time period. There are ways to configure the soul, the storage with the solar such that it works exactly the way you guys are describing, where all the clipped or wasted or lost energy goes into a battery. That technology's not quite as good as we want right now. That's called a DC coupled system, which means it's on the big side of the pipe, but this is an AC coupled system. So it's simply, there's X number of kilowatt hours that can go out on the grid. We're taking a portion of that, putting it in the battery each day, and then discharging it later in the day. So actually, there's a net loss, because the infer, the battery, the energy storage system is not a hundred percent efficient. There's a round-trip efficiency loss of about thirteen percent. But because this technology is new, the state wants us to build more and more of these so that we figure out how we're doing, how to do it, how to do it better. And that's where that incentive comes in. It kind of picks up for our lost revenue, our extra cost of building the thing and our lost revenue of actually using it. It keeps us neutral, but allows more, more energy storage to be out there on the grid, so that power can be deployed or held back based on demand.
Excellent explanation. You got nothing else?
No.
No?
I'll, I'll make a motion to give Ryan approval to sign the Borrego Solar tax agreements.
Pending review.
Pending review.
Second the motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Cool.
Thank you all very much.
Alright, thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Diane.
Okay, so thanks.
Thanks, Diane.
Can you drop the check off?
I need a bill first. I can't, I'm not allowed to pull money without a bill. Can you get a moment? Can you just send me the final soft version?
Yep.
Of this, so I can do it to my attorney for a final walkthrough, and we can greenlight it after we talk to Rick tomorrow. Sounds good, awesome.
Thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay. Okay. Laurie, we got some announcements? You want to do those for us?
Yes. So announcements are frozen assets.
It's back.
It's back. So I don't know how long it was gone for, but Katie has been working to, yeah, to, to get this back. She's been discussing it with Laura Foley and a few others. It's take five guesses on when the house will fall through the ice, if we get ice, that's the problem. So, I know, but she's looking for it to be submitted by February 1st, all forms. It's a twenty-dollar donation for five guesses, and we have the form here. It's at Country Trail Pizza Palace, Hub Diner, Hub of the Hub, and Yakimo's Gourmet. So you can go anywhere, you can turn it in, check made payable to the town of Hubbardston, or, you know, well, like, that's how you can pay, or I don't know if you feel comfortable giving cash. I don't know if they give receipts or what. But the closest guess, three hundred dollar gift card, second guess, a hundred and fifty dollar gift card, and a third guess is a seventy-five dollar gift card, with a fourth place of eggs from the Country Hen. So Country Hen's been big about it, and local businesses are big on supporting, so that's good. More information can be found at her website, ours, or, like I said, by going to the places. The third quarter tax bills are due. Those were mailed out, I believe, right before New Year's. So people should have received them. If they haven't received them so far, you can call Sandy, and she will be able to send it to you, or print you another one, or tell you how much you owe. So those are due by February 4th, because of the way that the first is on a Friday, we're not open, so it was extended to February 4th. And then the change to Hubbardston tobacco purchasing. State of Massachusetts changed the laws to be twenty-one years old to purchase cigarettes. Hubbardston had the choice through the Board of Health to see if they wanted to grandfather in the age to eighteen, and they said no. So effective January 1st, you must be twenty-one to purchase tobacco, nicotine products.
Question on that. Can, can we in fact do that? I'm reading this, you know, the state put the grandfather clause in for the eighteen-year-olds, as of January 1, 2019. So it's, it's in the state rig. Can we, as a town, say we're not going to do that?
Like, not at all?
Yeah, well, apparently, no, that's what they said, Board of Health decided there will be no grandfathering.
Mm-hmm.
So the, the Board of Health is allowed to decide that?
So we can, okay.
So they decided no.
And the reasoning behind their decision was they didn't want confusion for the sell, the sellers between who to sell for, so they wanted it to be consistent.
So that's effective.
Laurie, the census, is that going out?
So the census is going out. I talked to Joyce today. She's waiting for dog tags. That's another thing people are asking about, is dog tags. She hasn't received them yet. You can turn in your paperwork, or you can come in and apply, and then you just be mailed a dog license. So those will be going out, but they have not yet, because she's waiting for paperwork.
That's not the point. You need to get the low number. That's the point. You need to get the low number.
So, I know, I know. I haven't done mine yet. I'm usually a last-minute person, so. So those are those. Those are the announcements.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we see, we've got a quarter two financial review presentation?
Yes. It is in your packets, and I'll call it up here on the screen.
Can you find it?
So I'm going to scroll through and just show, this is a report that comes out twice a week. Call it the All Department Expenditure Report, or the ADR, if you're militarily inclined. Alright, this is, this shows us where we are in terms of spending. So every time we authorize a warrant, this is sent out, and then I added our, I had our accountants add the percentage that we should be at. So this allows me and the department heads and the accountant to track where we are in budget. So sometimes you're over budget. Right now, we should be at forty-seven point three percent based on this polled ADR. Sometimes you're over because of, because of reasons, but I highlight each, each budget that's over and require an explanation as to why you're over or why not. So if it makes sense because of the way we spend during the year, we let it go. If not, I add it to the report as something that we're tracking, and then we try and resolve it early. So we started this in quarter one. Well, I do it every time we get an ADR. But I'm going to continue to, to do this as part of our financial management. And we're finding it's helping us solve problems a little bit earlier, which is what we want. So in this ADR report, the accounts that are over that forty-seven point three, that were in the quarter one memo and still tracking as no overappropriation expectation are listed there. So some of them are wage accounts, IT maintenance, the salary accounts, some of the expense accounts, and road maintenance accounts. So many of these are either changes that were made after the appropriation, or in some cases, we do more in the fall than we do in the spring, so there's spending earlier on. A good example of that is IT maintenance, where we, we spend almost all of our money upfront on all of the major software purchases, so as the year, the percentage gets lower. Some items that were added, I just wanted to go over for transparency purposes with you. So the senior worker program is over expectation. This is normally paid in the fall, and it's paid once a year, so there's no expectation that we'd go over the appropriated amount. Tax title expense, we were really aggressive in the beginning of the year with our tax title procedures and notifying people that they owe us money. There's no further expenditures expected in that account until the end of the year, when we can fire off another round. The town clerk cert, this is paid twice a year, so it's a little bit over, because we just paid it. Board of Register wages, registrar wages, this is semi-annual, they get paid twice a year. So again, it's slightly over the forty-seven point three. Monmouth Regional Planning District, we missed this one in quarter one, but we pay this one in the first quarter. So this one's done for the year, and it won't exceed expectations. Police wages, I'm going to skip. We need to talk about that. It's in the next section, so we'll talk about it in detail. Fire department, vehicle maintenance and equipment outlay, talked to the chief. Both of these accounts are over, but there are some non-recurring expenses that happened in quarter one and quarter two that he's not expecting to pay, or is not going to pay in quarter three and four, so we're not going to exceed appropriation there. Emergency planning director is paid twice a year. And then the school assessments, both were paid, so they're at fifty percent. They should be at forty-seven point three, but just calling it out for transparency. So accounts under review, IT maintenance, because we're implementing the grant for community compact, we're still gauging how much of this we can use, how much room is in that budget in order to, to take on, because we took out capital, take on more software and how that's going to change. But we don't expect to ask for any more money for IT maintenance. Police wages, so this count's currently one point three percent over expectation. So this would result in a six to ten thousand dollar deficit. Been monitoring this one since the beginning of the year. Police chief has a detailed memo explaining how this deficit is due to part-time officers not taking shifts. So how many shifts are they not taking? About, they're only taking about sixty percent of what was budgeted.
What's the reason behind that? Is there?
Not that we can say, except they, they don't have to. So we're doing everything we can to include in our last contract, trying to entice part-time workers, but they're just not taking shifts at the same time. So we've asked everything. Should we get new part-time officers? Should we change the, the pay structure? And the chief, based off his experience, continues to say that we're not the only town that deals with this, and it's just difficult to.
So the reason it's over is because the officers who are taking those shifts make more?
Full-time, yep.
So quite a bit, never.
Yeah.
So instead of paying nineteen thirty-nine, which is our hourly rate for a part-time officer, we're paying time and a half on officers with some seniority.
Okay.
So, so what's being done to try and control this spending? We're putting officer, we're putting some shifts out as one officer per shift, which we don't like to do, but is occasionally necessary, and looking at fourth-quarter measures to try and reduce costs as much as possible. You'll see in my budget recommendation for FY20 that this structural deficit in the police account was the result of decisions that were made about five years ago. It's just slowly catching up to us as the officers get their step increases, which was done for retention purposes. So there's, we have a structural deficit in our budget, and there's a structural deficit inside the police budget. So there's a decision needs to be made. We can continue to do this year to year, or, or put money into the account to try and not fight and have to do single shifts and things like that. So it's going to be a service question.
Okay.
So that is, right now, the biggest problem in, in our budget. So expected deficits, the first three are known from quarter one, my salary, the police chief's salary, and ambulance lease of space. The police wages, what's being added there. So right now, we have a twelve to sixteen thousand dollar deficit from what was appropriated.
Can you explain the first three?
Yes, so my salary, I was evaluated at six-month period, and contractually was, if, if I met expectations, so I was in my probationary period for the first six months, then I would, I received an increase. So we were told, although we knew this might happen, that you shouldn't appropriate a town meeting for something that could possibly happen. The same with the chief's. He wasn't evaluated during the interim period. He was evaluated in July, so we didn't know that he was going to meet expectations and get that same contractual increase. Next year, both of us will be evaluated, in fact, in the next couple of months, so we'll be able to appropriate and not have this problem next year. Lease of space was a mistake. There's no other way to explain it. So we didn't account for the increase in cost of leasing the building that we're at, and that's a two thousand dollar hole. Police wages is the new item that we're discussing, and it's an estimate at this point. And that's not to say that we can't transfer some money from other lines in the police department, depending on what's happening. So it's not necessarily we're going to use sixteen thousand right here from the. And that's not to say that we can't transfer some money from other lines in the police department, depending on what's happening, so, uh, it's not necessarily we're gonna use sixteen thousand right here from the reserve fund, we're gonna have to see how the, how the, how the third quarter goes. Uh, good news is we have way more surpluses than deficits, which is always, as of today, is a positive, so building inspector's salary, as you mentioned earlier, Dan, the um, the grant is helping us fund a lot of the regional agreements, almost half the year is building commissioner's salary is paid for, so we'll have a surplus there. Dispatches, the new regional agreement with Rutland.
Wanna bound that for, it's a surplus of twenty-ish?
Uh, so twenty-four thousand was appropriated.
Doesn't matter, didn't actually get it quick.
Get you a quick guess. So, we're at uh, nineteen thousand left over, minus eight, so at least twelve for a surplus.
Mm-hmm.
See, pretty quick there.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, dispatches and wages, we still don't know what the reduction in the assessment will be, uh, we paid, we're actually over with dispatches and services right now, but we expect a significant reduction, probably along the lines of ten thousand dollars. That will also be seen in the FY twenty budget, we just don't have those numbers yet, they budget a little later than we do. Quabin, the twenty-three seven, um, in lowered assessment, we'll see that, we knew that number as well.
And that was, um, mostly due to um, transportation?
Yeah, chapter seventy-one, increased by the state, uh, late in their budget cycle, that didn't hit in time for us to incorporate that at the town meeting. So, we'll see that lowered assessment, and then hopefully the escalator from their assessment this year will also take that into account, so it's kind of a double savings. And then veteran benefits, so, um, as this department stabilizes, stabilizes with our new and improved regional agreements, um, we are still paying every veteran that comes to the door, we're s- and, and, I don't think I have to prove to anyone my commitment to veterans, um, but there, we were just spending more than, than we needed to here, and, and honestly couldn't tell you why, so we're expecting almost a surplus of thirty-five thousand in this account, we were budgeting sixty-five thousand, and we're, right now, we're on pace to spend twenty-five, so. Conservatively, there will be some type of surplus there, uh, and we'll use that in the budget cycle to try and fill some of the deficit. So, added to this report, some capital expenditures, um, we're trying, it, this, this report next year will have a very fluid process in terms of capital expenditure, we'll list all of them and then track them, kinda with the red light, green light strategy. We're just showing some of the capital expenditures and how we're tracking them, so the First Parish Unitarian Church, it's a CPA-funded capital, uh, project is complete, as you know, from our last meeting. The um, Hubbardston Fire Department Exhaust Mitigation System, this, um, we did complete the procurement, I'm, I'm not fully prepared to s- to discuss, we, we do have a hiccup and a change order from, um, the person who we procured this from, Murphy Specialist, so I'm working with the AG's office to see whether or not that was done legally, meaning they've added some cost to it. Frankly, I don't appreciate the way they did it, so we're gonna go back and see and make sure that's legal, and discuss whether or not we're gonna throw that bit out and go with our second.
Yeah, wasn't there only two companies that did that originally?
There was.
Pretty competitive.
So, I mean, it's all open documents, I can send you the emails, but essentially what was said was, we didn't think the project looked this way, so we need to add this stuff. This was a person who refused to come and see it before the project was done, and then blamed us for not getting an engineer, uh, so, working on it right now. I'll have an update, if we can throw it out, we will. And then the Hubbardston Public Library Roof, we entered the procurement phase, it's on our website now and advertised in all appropriate channels. Um, we've been working with the, heavily with the library board of trustees, we're very engaged in this project to review the procurement documents with NALT Architects and uh, get this out correctly, it's been a, a pleasure to work with both of them.
Yeah, I, I sent that to you, I think, to you, Tom, too, I don't know if you saw the email or the.
Yes, I think quite, no.
Uh, sorry, that's a, I have, that's the, it's the pub, it's called Construction Journal, it's where all bids and, and procurement stuff comes out, and I just, I scroll through it every day, and I just saw Hubbardston, so, um.
You were announcing that it was indeed public.
Correct.
Uh, just, we're hitting every, any timeframe there, and, and it's just exciting, that, that project's gonna, it's gonna come in on time, uh, which is nice. The pending projects we still have, the firefighter turnout gear, that hasn't been procured yet, uh, town center engineering, we're continuing to pay this as it now progresses towards seventy-five percent completion. Library maintenance projects, they, over Christmas, had a, a problem with the boiler, and used some of the six thousand that was approved to just go ahead and upgrade that, and also did some exterior lighting. Uh, but they're continuing to do some of those smaller projects, and then our wage study is done, you'll see, uh, some of that in, in an upcoming meeting, the, the results of our, our wage study and market adjustment. Our finance team is super busy, again, just to re- to refresh, the finance team is the uh, assessing department, treasurer, accountant, town clerk, Lori on the payroll side, and um, and myself going over all things financial, so, we're working with Department of Revenue to improve our processes there, and also provide some uh, some stability to our budgeting and financial management processes. So, reviewed the tax rate process to try and learn lessons, completed a ton of financial policy reviews, reviewed the five-year financial forecast, which you saw, and the revenue projections. What we're working on now, and which you'll see soon, next, next meeting actually, is the presentation of our capital plan, we're going over that on Wednesday. The finance team will see the first draft of my budget on Wednesday for presentation on February twen- fourth.
Is that, I think I've asked this before, but is Collins Center coming in for that?
There. Uh, I wanted them, I wanted the third party to present it to you, but we've been working pretty heavily on that, it's a good plan, it's not an overreach, uh, I think you'll enjoy the work. And then, uh, we're gonna be opening the, believe it or not, the town meeting warrants very soon. Budget process is received, all department requests, I'm holding meetings with departments this week and have completed about half of them already, and I do have a first draft of my budget, uh, still fine-tuning things like revenue. We should get a ton of assessment and revenue updates in the next twenty days, so that'll heavily change that budget. And then, things we wanna look at in this report in the future are revolving account reviews, still not, still not happy with uh, the presentation of information there, so we're working on it. Special fund reviews, same, same thing, and employee accruals, we'd like to provide that report to you as well.
Employee accruals, um, can you go into, I, I mean, I know what accruals are, but how does that work?
So, um, like to report on new liability and our ability to track where we are in terms of accruals, so given the size of our staff, we should be able to tell you the impact of, of how we're doing vacation times, what the liability is on buybacks and et cetera.
Okay, mm-hmm. Okay.
Um, and we're working, I'm working on addressing plans for long-term liability, uh, based on our union contracts, contract with the police chief, and what happens if everybody leaves, uh, and we need to pay back all the sick leave. It's not a unique to Hubbardston problem, but if we can get ahead of the curve and address it, um, we'd be in good shape.
Okay.
Easier said than done.
Alright, thank you. Okay, we're on to new business, um, this is the uh, police policy review that you had sent to us.
Yes.
Five of them.
So, this, um, starting our policy of, of giving you policies and then having you read them and then coming back, so, um, gave them to you very early and, and still giving you time to review, and there's a, a whole folder of them. So, the police chief does have the authority to implement policy and, and has to allow you to review them, um, and then change them, you know, based off that review, even though he has the final authority, so. Uh, just giving you those policies is part of his goal to update all thirty policies or so in the police department, uh, this is another batch of, I believe, six, so we'll be looking at next meeting to, to vote on, um, however you wanna vote on this.
Okay. Uh, then you have continued financial policy review?
Yes, everyone's very excited. Okay, so the last time we did policies, uh, I sort of intimated that we were looking at, um, overarching policies, those big policies, sort of more your purview of, of how to guide the, the town and, and uh, financial management team in order to provide the best financial management we can, um, while we're still continuing in this vein, these are more technical, more how does, how do we do it procedural-type pro- policies. So, I have each, each one of your policies, and I just have sort of an overview for each one. In terms of grant management, this sets parameters for departments to solicit and execute grants. Why is that a big deal, um, you don't want your departments going to get grants that have multi-year funding, or, um, matching funds, et cetera, without having a discussion about how that fits into the bigger picture. So, we're just trying to establish a review process, and we set that number in the finance team, is anything over ten thousand, you need to come talk to this, this board about that grant and how it fits into the big picture. So, we wanna align those grants with our overall financial goals and establish procedures for managing them, so we don't lose track of things that we may have to pay, or triggers that may impact the budget in a negative way. So, that's what this policy would guide. Next one is the overlay policy, so this is money we set aside in the budget every year, uh, in order to provide abatements and, and other relief to taxpayers. The assessors reviewed this, they're very happy with the uh, overlay policy, comes straight out of best practices from the state, so this ensures proper treatment of that overlay account, so it outlines how we would fund that every year. And then I, how we would identify and review if we have any excess, which is a good problem, and then, um, the town does have the ability to use the, the overlay surplus or that excess, so this establishes procedures for that. It's not something you should tap into very often, um, it's there if you need it, but you should have sort of a, a guide for how you wanna do that.
Ryan, on, uh, can we go back to grant management for a minute?
Sure.
Um, when we go for the, the strap grant, um, I don't know if, if it would help us, um, if, say, we're going for a particular road and, uh, say, the town on the other side received the strap grant, and they completed a section of road, and would, if that would, uh, benefit us more, say, one of the particular roads is meeting up to another road that had a strap grant from another town. Just maybe, uh, that would help us out in the future, I don't know, just something to consider.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
You know.
We abut many towns, so, um.
Cause if they issued it for the other side, you know, connecting two, two strap grants.
Yeah. See the va- I see the value in that, it's, all the roads go everywhere else too, so. Okay, procurement, conflict of interest, so this ensures integrity in the procurement and contract process, educates town employees about, um, different conflicts of interest that exist, and establishes a process for screening. It also numerates the way, um, you can identify, review, and report potential conflict problems, so, this is a bigger problem than, than you would think, uh, there's a lot of, um, conflicts of interest that people walk into intentionally and unintentionally, so this sort of lays it out. This is who we are as a town, and it's tied directly to the state policies in terms of procurement. Reconciliation, so this, this is an important one, it comes right out of our audit, uh, to improve our reconciliation process, so, we wanna make sure that we're in balance, that we're not, um, we're looking for and safeguarding against fraud, and we have accuracy, and that our financial officers are doing what they're supposed to be doing, so this establishes processes for identifying any deficiencies in cashbook, payroll withholdings, receivables, and general ledger. Just to put this in a more, um, tangible scale, I'm working right now with local services to come in and train myself on how to manage this process, and then also create a checklist that, uh, all of our employees are gonna sign off on every month to say that they've met the reconciliation goals and all of the financial processes, so that we can provide that to you as part of the financial memo, saying we've hit every marker, uh, that we said we were going to in our policies. Reconciliations is one of those markers. Next one is revenue turnovers, so, uh, this is when, uh, we receive a payment for something, or the town receives money, it has to go to the treasurer, and there's a prescribed process for that. It holds our employees accountable, reduces the chances of fraud, or, uh, any liability in that sense. So, you can picture a person paying cash for, um, a particular permit, or their taxes, or, or paying for anything, any type of service that comes from the town, there needs to be a prescribed process for that to get to the treasurer, and for there to be any accountability if it isn't followed, so, I've been enforcing this one very heavily, we have a, depending on like, this, the amount, like cash needs to be turned in immediately, certain sizes need to be turned in immediately, and everything else needs to be by week. So, I have flags in place, if anything comes in late, we go talk to that employee, correct the behavior, try and get a hold of our turnover process. Then the last one is travel reimbursement, so, um, this one's fairly straightforward, if you read, but it, it just provides that education to people who travel and, and mitigates the opportunity for any embarrassing fraud, waste, or abuse based off travel costs. Uh, I call this the keep the town out of the newspaper policy. So, these were all approved by the finance team, their next stop after you, pending any adjustments, would be to the f- uh, finance committee for final publishing as our, as part of our financial management policy guidebook.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it, anyone else have any questions or comments on any of these?
I'll make a motion to approve the financial policy review as presented.
Second emotion?
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thanks for putting these together, continuing to put these together.
It's fun.
He loves it.
Hey, don't give away the secrets. Uh, there's only four left, if that makes everyone happy, so happy new year.
Library roof, update?
Yeah, so I, I hit on this in the, uh, the financial memo, but we are, we've entered the procurement phase for the library roof, the bid opening will be on January twenty-third, pending any amendments.
Yep.
Um, we've had one, two, three, four, five, six, eight people, uh, register as having pulled the, the project plans.
Hmm.
Doesn't mean that all of them will submit bids, but that means we're getting a healthy reaction to this project, I think it's a popular project, it's fixing something on the town seal, so, uh, we're excited about the number.
There's a pre-bid meeting too, right, I saw on there, a pre-bid meeting as well?
Yeah, that is on the fourteenth, so a week from today. Tom, you're on the trustee, I don't know if you wanna add anything to that, or?
Um, no, we're, we're pleased with the work of the architect, and we'll see how the bid's gonna.
Great.
Uh, but that's it, just wanna keep the town updated on, just a major project.
Sounds good, yep. And now we're at, uh, as far as new business, the Capital Improvement Plan and Committee, policies and procedure?
Yeah, so, um, I'll say the whole point of doing the capital plan was to, to, to get ourselves on a good footing for the next five years and then beyond, and the problem with a lot of capital plans is, now that you have a good capital plan, everyone can kinda create a good capital plan, or get a grant, in this case, to do one, it's what do you do with it after?
Yep.
So, before we even present the capital plan, I just wanted, wanted to, um, just reiterate my belief that we should have a plan in place for then what do we do with this plan. So, I, I don't think there'll be major questions on the plan itself, but, but what's next, and how do you adjust it year to year? So, these policies and procedures speak to that, um, and what I did was I consolidated stuff that existed already in Hubbardston with best practices from the state, and, and other capital planning committees from local area to develop a, a capital planning plan, or calendar, that would allow the committee to have sort of a strong idea of what it is that we're supposed to do. So, this would, uh, set the calendar, empower this committee, talk about how they're appointed, how they should be conducting an annual inventory, or at least assessing the inventory that, that we should be doing. Determine the status of previous projects and monitor, which is, uh, something that we haven't been great at in the past. Assessing the town's financial capacity, so fitting these things into, say, a five-year financial forecast, and then, um, adding to the plan, which is, which might be the most important part. So, all of these policies speak to that, and then at the end, there is how to update the plan, what policies are tied to it, and then the actual sheets that they would use. So, this should be a playbook for the committee to run with, and ideally, based off our charter and our bylaws, uh, this committee would hit their markers in terms of time, come to this board, re-present the five-year plan. It shouldn't come from necessarily me, they would obviously do it in conjunction with me, present their recommendations, everybody meets, so it would be the CPCIC, Capital Committee, the Finance Committee, and the Select Board, uh, meeting in a joint public hearing, so people can talk about it, speak with department heads, and then go to town meeting with a unified plan in terms of, this is what we're, this is what we're looking at for the next year, and then four years after that.
Is it, is there a capital planning committee as we speak?
Mm.
There is, there is not.
We did have somebody interested though today, so I did send an email out, he was interested in two different boards, and I suggested this one, saying that we have a lot of discussion going on in town, and if you have family and friends that wanna join, it would be great.
Can you, I know it's in here, but just go over the, uh, recommended makeup of the committee?
So, by charter, it's five members, um, three residents, and then one member appointed by the planning board, and one member appointed by the finance committee. So, that's the planning board to appoint their member, the finance committee to appoint theirs, and then the selectmen would point three members.
So, there, there's.
Sorry, one needs to come from the selectmen as well.
So, the planning board, so there's two citizen?
Three citizen.
But then, but it's a five member.
Yeah, I got, I got it confused in my head.
Okay, so it's, is it finance and, and, and select board and not planning board?
No, I think it's.
Planning board is part of it.
Planning board and finance committee, I think, so may.
I'm getting a six.
Yeah.
No, I think there's two, not, not the select board, I don't think the select board has a member. Not I can check.
Let me check. Okay. I know the answer, but I don't trust myself, so just give me one second.
It's digging deep down there.
Yeah. It says it right here.
It's finance committee, planning board and three appointed by the board of selectmen.
Did you just say finance? Yeah, no select board.
Yes. Okay.
Now, the planning board and um finance, are they appointing a member from their board?
Yes.
Okay.
And I've been informed to give those names, um so really looking for
Three citizens.
Three citizens to promote this, to shake the trees, to try and find good people for this board, it should be, I won't use the word powerful, but an impactful board doing strong work on behalf of the community, I believe the recommendation that comes from this board will be very strong, uh necessary to um let's be honest, the departments are gonna ask for what they want and what they need, so you need a strong board to be able to handle that. If I was a department head, I would ask for everything I needed, we need to prioritize as a town, and although the department heads do work well together, uh there needs to be a gatekeeper, so.
So what's what's the plan for um doing our best to recruit?
Um.
I tried today with an email, so far, we'll see where that goes, you know, maybe they'll have somebody on board, but.
Uh so first talking to the to the people you know, we're going to email all the boards, obviously there's some like-minded volunteers in in there and see who they know as well. But if you know anyone that's been saying, hey, I'd like to get involved, uh this this is a really, this is a good place to learn municipal government and it's not overwhelming, there'd be a lot of support. Um and it's things that people understand, how to purchase vehicles and and things like that, um getting a lot of input, so.
And it it's business too, right, so people who have some some experience in business can can wrap their heads around it, you know, pretty quickly, I think, but social media, you you um.
We will be.
Will be.
So um what?
We've been promoting on social media and we did get members that way with doing the vacancies, we've actually filled quite a few.
Yep.
Lori's idea and her strategy, which has been good, is to say this spot is open, not all of these spots are open, so it's not as um overwhelming, that's helpful a little bit.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
So we're looking to see if you approve this policy, um this base for for what the the town would do, um and that's another thing I think will help, once someone says, hey, I'm interested, we can send this to them and say, hey, this is this is the playbook. You don't need to make it up, this is what you need to do.
Mm-hmm.
Um the se- the select board has empowered you to do this on their behalf and uh would really appreciate your help.
Looks good to me.
So motion? I'll make the motion to approve the capital improvement planning committee policies and procedures as presented.
Oh, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yep.
Yes. One more, a town committee review, which I I think this is a good idea.
So this is a this is a big project, so the um just wanted to introduce, so I've I've heard this board say a couple times, uh there's nothing to project up here.
Oh yeah, we're looking at the same slide we were.
Has said a lot and received recommendations in the past of um we have too many boards and committees, so looking at the looking at the boards and committees that that we've seen, there are there are some that are massively vacant, so two that come to mind are the human resource advisory board and then the long-range facilities planning committee, which once was extremely active, um and has since fallen off because of uh project ending or efforts ending. So been investigating some of these committees with uh the town clerk and also going through our town charter and bylaws to see to see what we need. Cause I'd rather say that our boards are, you know, ninety-five percent filled because they match what we need, than say, you know, we have all these boards, but they're they're empty.
Yep.
And if we got rid of a couple uh committees, some of these ad hoc advisory committees that are that are necessary, then that that number would improve and we could start saying, you know, eighty percent of our boards are filled thanks to your peers, you know, finish it off for us. So was gonna give you those two, but we found out in these processes that there's more to it than just um eliminating things and and that's the right thing, you don't want the board to just be able to say no, you wanna be able to debate it and talk about it in public, so the human resource advisory board comes directly from the town charter, to get rid of that, you would need to um change the charter.
Okay.
Which happens every ten years or by um a pretty significant petition. So that one can't necessarily be touched right now, even if you want it to. The long-range facilities planning committee, uh we've determined based on our review that um if you wanted to symbolically um get disband that one or at least repurpose it and fill it, uh that is under your purview as a board of selectmen. So that could be a start and then looking for the feedback from the board on anything else you want us to review and and look at legally to see if there's any other changes.
I think we should clean it up, might as well, right, um we can always get it back.
This board has the ability uh to create advisory committees, that that is one such committee, at one point you had the zoning enforcement committee, which is now disbanded. Uh this is one of those boards, it was it was trying to help plan building assets long term.
Yep. Uh I guess it it just doesn't doesn't image great, right, I mean, it's like almost like a giving, if someone's not paying attention and it just come across it, it's like, oh, I've just given up. They're not even gonna think about the future of the facilities, you know, so, which is not the point whatsoever, but it it we just make sure that we image it properly.
So I would say to image it properly, that that should be under the purview of the capital improvement planning committee.
Sure.
Um just make them more robust rather than have several different, cause we just don't have enough volunteers to staff.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree.
Three similar efforts.
Okay, so can we be honest? Uh you know.
Make a motion to disband the long-range facility committee?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And then um you know, rather than saying we should get, we should do this, just send us anything else, we won't bring it up again unless there's anything else you want us to research, but we'll do the research and and figure out
Sure.
if there's anything else we can clean up, but there isn't as much as as people say there is, you know what I mean, like we're pretty actually staffed and there is a lot of volunteer effort, so I'd just like to change that talking point.
Yeah, yeah, no, but your point has been it's recent.
We've had a lot of, I mean, even today, eh a lot of them are building department, but still there's one, two, three right there that are, you know, and they're all different boards, economic development, conservation and open space, which we'll be looking at. We did have a uh we will have a resignation, which you'll see, but again, it's being filled by other other spots.
Okay, um.
So fi- uh finance committee still has an opening.
Yep.
And um now capital improvement planning committee, two openings if anyone's watching and wants to get involved.
Okay. Anyone at the table here got any old business they wanna go through?
No?
Tom?
I'd like to continue ju- just discussing appointments briefly.
Yeah.
Back in uh.
Yeah, of course.
Pulled out.
If you make it.
Big old. Back in June, you folks uh constructed the affordable housing committee. In your vote. Lori was kind enough to provide this to me and um we constituted it and then Vince Ritchie was of course not elected, so hi- his position was open at the time and since this time, uh Tom Bratko has also resigned. We'd like to put Alice in there uh in place of Tom Bratko and um separate from the planning board, but while at a planning board meeting, uh Francois raised his hand and said, gee, I'd be interested in that, and so we uh roped him into that. And he's he's of course approaching it as a citizen. And I and I don't know exactly what makes up a full board, but uh Danielle Arakelyan is also listed here. I don't know if she's re-upped, um and there may be some other.
It might say on the top of that, what's in the red, uh just from here.
Well, it says five members, one year term.
Oh, that's it, it doesn't say who it's made of?
No, well, it probably doesn't the charter, I don't have it with me.
It it might not there, okay, I just didn't.
So Joyce, I mean, Joyce will have all the info.
Yeah, I have a lot of it, but I sometimes they say on there.
Could be they may just be waiting to be contacted, not wondering, you know. Since they we've lost in in town at the top, maybe they've just been thinking, well, let's I'll wait till I hear from somebody.
Well, um that's what I know and um also on September fifth, I think that was shortly after Alice came onto the board. We tried to uh designate planning board members that would go off and fill some of these positions where these boards say the a planning board ought to be a rep there.
Sure.
In some cases, they're ex officio reps, they don't get to vote or anything, but they're they're present. And uh so we made up a list and we voted them and I offer that tonight, uh so that you can review it and maybe either tonight or the next time, vote on it, but this was our uh list and I have the meeting minutes um motion that we made and uh voted on, make that official, that list official. I'm a document short, I think. Oh, here it is. In other words, we we voted to establish that table, but then you need to to vote on top of us, so to speak. It was a a motion and a vote to adopt the whole table.
Which we'll see in a second.
Yeah, you which you will see in a second, yeah. So just I'm just trying to provide a paper trail. And this was the the motion for that table. I think what happened was, you know, Patty was leaving and Christina was coming in and this this didn't make it over to you. So I'm kinda delivering it tonight for you.
Is this a copy?
You can have a, that's of course on the web, so. So that's all I got.
All right, so.
You can think about it and.
Yeah.
We're we're meeting informally tomorrow to have Alice lead the charge on the affordable housing committee. I've dragged Vince back into it because he has a lot of history. And uh but we're not really meeting as a board yet because the board hasn't been constituted, completely constituted, like Alice isn't on it, so. That's all I got, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Anyone else have any old business?
So we'll research this and bring them on the next agenda, sounds good.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Rest warm.
Yeah.
I you know what, Dan, on the old business, uh Katie had asked us about the Christmas lights.
Yeah.
If we thought we could do it add anymore and um she did a great job and the only other thing I I could think of was, you know, the sign over there that it says like Boston, it's got like a
Yeah.
a th- uh uh index finger pointing.
Mm-hmm.
And it's really, it's really done well, well, it's like red, white and blue, maybe she could add something there or spotlight or some Christmas lights on that thing, I just thought that would uh it's a nice looking sign.
Sounds good, yeah, she'll do that in a second, I'm sure.
She's probably doing it right now.
She's in her car.
Put us just leave a spotlight around.
I think she's already went and bought a whole bunch of lights on clearance, so careful what you wish for.
Okay, Ri- Ryan, you're up with TA report?
So first speaking of Katie and the um special events, just wanted to highlight the Hubbardston light fight, so when I was researching to to try and apply for this job, it was the first thing that I saw, I thought this was like what Hubbardston did, the Hubbardston light fight, cause it was everywhere and it was fun to see it uh for real this time. And um the incredible amount of participation from the community, the fire department, from the from the staff side. We put up lights, we didn't win, but we thought we did a good job here, so uh just wanted to highlight the first place winner, um Handyloos on one Worcester Road. Second place was eighty Twin Hill Road and third place is actually the Hubbardston Fire Station, so this this was in uh where to go in central Mass, this was in newspapers, um this is the ti- this is why the special events was created, was to sort of bring Hubbardston onto the map.
Lou and Lou putting the hub thing.
Yeah, that one, that was pretty neat. So I just saw, so just some great comments on social media from people who don't live here saying, oh, I can't wait to bring my kids and then go to the, you know, Hub Town diner and get hot chocolate and things like that, so that so although it it's great and it's interesting, it's also economic development at its best, so I'm hoping to continue things like that through efforts like frozen assets and then uh dingy dash and and other events that we have going through the year. Makes every one of Katie's visits here worthwhile.
Yep.
The budget update, I'll keep this quick since we've talked about it, but we'll be reviewing everything with the finance team this week, holding meetings with uh departments and um looking to find ways to to bring you a balanced budget by February fourth. Capital plan update, again, we talked about this, but uh January twenty second, the day after Martin Luther King Day, Colin Center's gonna come and present their um the capital plan they built in conjunction with us and our department heads. And we solved this dilemma tonight, so we don't need one of you to be appointed to CIPC. My fault, the uh newest department report is up.
Similarly, um well put together, you know, everybody sort of gave it their effort there.
Yeah, and um the staff is sending pictures now and and just fully embraced this idea, but it's also a great source of information and highlights um just things that people don't know that government does. For example, with the DPW here, just how much work they do to get things prepped, to include uh winter cutting brush and and so they're not just sitting around waiting for snow, they're proactive and and all the things that they can do in the winter to make sure that everything is ready to go in the spring, it's just this year-round fight uh to keep everything together. All the effort of our finance team, health department's doing the same thing we do every year, updating permits and getting ready for inspections. Uh the planning department and um Christina have really taken off in terms of organizing themselves and and becoming a f- a functional um and strong department. Here's Claudia with a bear, I just think it's a fun picture. Uh that's in their trip up to the White Mountains, fifty-three seniors went, just uh just unbelievable effort.
They take a bus?
The Wilson bus. That's why when you see all the cars parked at the um rec field, they all park there.
Oh, I just wondered.
Where they pick them up.
Yep, they pick them up there and dump them back up.
S- a rare collaboration between police and fire, uh coming together to help um help people in need during this this winter holiday was was very inspiring. Um our amazing fire department doing amazing work fighting a fire and just to show what happened here on December twentieth, uh fighting this blaze for a basement fire, uh keeping the community safe, uh if you saw on social media the dirty gear after that they had to clean, just it's a unbelievably.
That wasn't Ba- uh Barry Mitchell aid.
Yes, but unbelievably difficult uh difficult job that sometimes people forget how dangerous that job can be. Our assessing department, our regionalization, building department does a great job for people who are interested, showing how many permits as part of our trans transparency initiative, the income we're bringing in, how many permits we're pulling. And then um our emergency management director is just all over FEMA, I feel bad for them, so it's gonna bear some fruit, so that's the department reports available, um we've already had almost a hundred hits on that, uh people checking out the information, it was released today.
That's nice, it's got the permits, we can see how many uh like new houses or.
Yeah, she does that every month and uh with our new our new software that we're gonna be putting in, our reporting is gonna be even stronger, we'll actually have a de- uh department report with pending permits, et cetera. Our regionalization efforts allowing us to do more there.
I don't know if they can differentiate like uh one one as a new construction as opposed to someone that's just doing uh say a porch, so you don't think that a building permit is a new house, you know what I'm saying?
You can tell by the value, but I understand what you're saying, we can.
Okay. Can we um, this is a little bit off topic, but uh has to do somewhat with the reporting, um can we get a a an an update from Travis where we stand with snow and ice?
Yes.
I I know that.
I thought of that today.
Yeah, I you know, I know, cause it's been glazy, you know what I mean, and he talks about events, you know, how many events you have in the season, um be interesting to know it, you know, the fact that we really haven't had much snow overall, what effect it still had on the total budget.
Yeah, he's had some callouts on holidays too.
He calls, he calls it the little annoying events because people don't see them, right, so if you have ten big snowstorms, that was like, of course, you're spending more money, but ice overnight, police call in, say, you know, it's dangerous out here, they gotta come in and treat.
Yeah.
Even though you don't see snow or in the morning you see a perfectly clean road, there's a reason why.
Oh, you see all the salt.
So it's um yes, we'll have them come in at your next meeting.
Did um before I forget, could we, or I'm sure Travis probably did, but could we as a board send some type of thank you note to Monty Tech for doing that lean tube down there?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that was fantastic.
Yeah, it was. Oh, stuff like that helps out a lot, so.
They're actually looking at doing some stuff in the slade building too next year.
So send them the note.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe they do.
They loved it.
I mean, they.
Have some chocolate.
Where I grew up in in Dudley, grew up in Dudley, uh Bay Path, which is the the built the fire station.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Really, yeah.
In collaboration with, no, it is. Um.
No, it's good.
Yeah.
It's a great idea, I can hand deliver it, I'm meeting with the superintendent and doing a tour of the school as well, so I'll bring it and talk about the collaboration, that would be a good thing.
Uh, be great.
Sure.
Try and go meet some of those students that were involved. All right, uh last two I talked about, which is the uh library roof procurement and the church roof versus parish. All right, uh last two I talked about, which is the uh library roof procurement and the church roof, first parish roof. Uh you have those updates, the wage study, so HRS has been completing our wage study, been talking with them almost every day. We're not as far off as as we thought in terms of our non-union employees, there's still a little bit of a gap and we wanna get everybody on a pay scale so that pay increases make sense. So I'll have a presentation for that. Talking very short money to get everybody where they should be and get that parity that I've been talking about. If updated properly, uh this will last four to six years, so I'll also have a plan for how do we update this and not have to pay someone to do market analysis, um but every five to six years. So that what that means is they took an analysis of local areas and you'll see the towns, cost, see where we fit and and made a recommendation as to where we should go. Never at the top end of the scale, but you know, sort of middle, middleish to to in the middle base of our town construction. Software conversions, I'm working with Assessing Building and Public Works to update our vision, um in improve our Building Department software. Saying that we have Building Department software is 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 misleading, it's not very good. So actually implementing a strong software that'll allow us to to be marketable for regionalizations in the future. And um DPW software, looking for work orders, maybe citizen participation and even paving management, so we can get you better statistics on that. And then for employee recognition, really like to thank uh Police, Fire, DPW and other staff to include the library, came in to fix the boiler uh over Christmas. Just their service during the holiday, keeping the town run. Um, I know a lot of people who work in this industry, it takes a really special person to leave your family on Christmas and go take care of other people. So I appreciate that we have so many people that are willing to do it, um and who give their time and in many cases volunteer extra time to to make sure that the town runs. They just take a lot of pride and and I just truly appreciate that. Also have a letter. I've been given permission to read, but not the names. Have a lot of paper over here. So this was a letter to Chief Parent, said in a in a world where everyone is willing to tell you that when something is done wrong, I'm writing to express my deep appreciation of Hubbardson Police. A year ago this month, my house was robbed and the only thing I could talk about regarding this experience um was my dealings with the Hubbardson PD. They specifically call out Detective Chatney for going above and beyond during this stressful incident, keeping his their family informed. Also talk about uh the police involvement in Halloween and uh the citizens crossing, so just nice to see uh residents appreciating people who don't always get noticed for the little things that they do um in some of people's most stressful times. Upcoming topics, military leave policy, I finished this, just vetting it, I'm gonna uh send it out to you for initial review with no group comment and then.
Is it like war and peace?
It is.
No, no pun intended.
So I'll tell you the structure of it, it is the state policy, which you'll see how confusing that is, and then option one, option two. Um, I don't feel comfortable recommending my own military leave, so I don't know if I'm gonna leave the room, but I'm I'm not gonna be involved in leading that conversation, so I'm gonna give that to you. Um, but it does have implications for hiring in the future and we don't know who was gonna hire and we do wanna be a community that welcomes uh service members, I think. Community uh benchmarking, we're continuing to talk about that, five-year capital plan, you'll see that at your next meeting, road maintenance is trending to um the hearing and presentation in February. Human Resource Policy again February and and budget presentation also in February.
Ryan, on the the road maintenance, um where they did the sidewalks and the curb out here, it it's almost like that should almost be like a priority now to get the surface done to match the sidewalk, I mean, I don't know what direction traffic, you know, what's priority, but it just seems like.
Oh, yeah, the road.
Even the road, the Elm Street.
The road, yeah, Elm Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think about that every time I drive.
You know, because you got brand new sidewalk and curb and I wish, you know, I'm gonna think about.
We uh we don't like to bring unfinished products to, but the, there's a plan for for that type of thing, um but the cost there, you're you're talking almost a six-figure cost. So it depends on other priorities and.
Understood.
Um. Yes. Would love to do that. It would just look so nice to do both, uh bring them in Elm and just have the entryways of the town be.
Yeah.
You know, give them noise.
Yeah, yeah.
But if I lived up in the hills, I'd want some attention too, so.
Yep.
Maybe lumbar.
I think they, I don't know if they did a strap grant on the other side, on the Princeton side.
Oh, okay, there we go. I know where he's getting at now.
Cause they did that like three years ago, four years ago.
No wonder why that was brought up.
I knew why it was.
All right, so that's the TA report, thank you, Brian, um and we are at appointments, we've done E, F, G and H already, so we've got four appointments.
Three appointments, one resignation.
One resignation, sorry about that.
I'll make a motion to appoint Whitney Freiberg, Economic Development Committee, Richard Clapton, Conservation Commission, and Chip Penarosi, uh Open Space Committee.
Second motion.
Any discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes?
And I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Tom Collier from the Economic Development Committee.
Second motion.
Did Tom, um.
He wrote a letter stating that he did not wanna be on it anymore.
Do we have that?
He has that.
Yeah, I can forward that too.
Okay.
Uh we made sure, we don't wanna, we want positive confirmation, so even in uh someone was recommended for, that we'll bring to in the future. They hadn't been in a lot of meetings, we still reach out that final time and we'll give you that evidence, so that no one feels like they were ignored or.
Okay.
Or feels comfortable that everybody was contacted appropriately.
Okay, any further discussion? On favor? Yes?
Yes.
And we've got a single wage authorization.
Yep, this is um contractual wage authorization.
Do you have to wa- do you have to waive anything on this, or is it just a?
Notice wave, right, you can't.
Yeah, waiving notification.
With waiving notification, okay. Make a motion to accept the wage authorization for Benjamin LaFortune, DPW full-time with the, how do you remember the wave?
You just need to wave notification, not accept yet.
Okay, no need for the uh notification.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And we've got a couple of minutes, uh anyone open up, get to see who was there, we were.
Yeah, um, we were all there except for Jeff on the thirteenth.
Okay, so.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen.
A second motion.
Uh, you were, you were there, so any discussion?
You were there on that one.
Yeah, you were there, Jeff.
You were there on that one.
Yep. Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
When I, when my furnace went.
A second motion. Mm-hmm. Yep. Uh, discussion? On favor? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, not too much on the next thing, committee updates, uh the the task force, um the next step is, I don't know the date, I can't remember exactly, but it's the um school committee voting to proceed with the next step enclosure of the New Braintree School, um middle school, uh center school. And um, you know, then we'll go from there if that is is done, like I think I explained last time. Um, the town of uh New Braintree's Board of Select Board has to, um per the regional agreement, set up a single focused uh town meeting for that topic within three to six months, so and I see no reason why it's not gonna be proceeding on, so uh I guess we'll just have to wait and see. Uh Town Center Committee, no, no updates still, we're still waiting back from uh um the state, uh their comments on the revised twenty-five percent design. We got an invoice this week, I think, from or last week from TEC for some of the uh final work related to, maybe that was for the sidewalk?
That's the engineering.
That was engineering for that, okay, so just moving along.
It's seventy-five percent side, so.
Okay, our last meeting was was in, you know, November or something to sort of go over things, but we're just just waiting on the design there, um.
I did have something for the Town Center, so the flag.
I was just gonna ask.
The the big flag, um so we dressed this today, but it was stuck in the tree again, so when it goes to half mast, it gets stuck in the beautiful trees that are there. Uh it rips it to shreds and and gets stuck for days, so we did, the fire department went and freed it with much effort today. Um, but I spoke with uh Jeff, our tree warden, about possibly trimming the branches, cause in order to get it unstuck, the the fire department did have to break some branches. So he's uncomfortable doing any trimming without the Town Center Committee weighing in and maybe this board weighing in on his ability to trim that back a little bit. Um, understanding that protecting the tree would be the first interest, but also making it so that he can put the flag at half mast.
Yeah, I was just gonna bring that up after this, because I noticed it was tangled in the trees, they need to be trimmed back a little bit.
And that's a new flag, isn't it? New flag and new rope thing, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and those aren't cheap flags, not the, it's the biggest consideration, but.
No. No, but it's not, it doesn't look good when the thing's tangled in the tree.
No, it looks good.
No.
So what?
Who's in charge of the flag on, yeah?
So the police go daily, um when it's necessary and handle that because they're here, sort of what we've come to an agreement on.
Okay.
But they don't, they have the least ability to free it, um the DPW has a, occasionally has a bucket truck and then the fire department, as long as the ground allows it, can handle it.
Yeah, it's.
It's never just an easy thing and we get a ton of.
That might be the time to think about that and get it done this winter while it's frozen.
Yeah.
Even if they have to snow blow, how to get the bucket truck over there.
We don't have to worry about snow yet.
No, it's not.
I think the flag take priority over the tree.
Yeah.
I do too, but what, I mean, it would be nice to know before we just sort of say, let's go do it, you know, how many branches, I'm not saying exactly how many, but are they like branches or are they like little twigs or or whatnot, do you have any idea?
I wouldn't.
Who 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 would?
So we would send Jeff, the tree warden, to do that.
Jeff.
Okay. Okay, I'll get that.
He's ready, he just doesn't wanna, he's, he said, I don't wanna upset the Town Center Committee.
No, I think it needs to be done.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we can authorize him to go either report back to you or to handle what needs to be done.
Um, when, I guess, when would he do it, if?
He's pretty responsive, I imagine he'd look at it this week, um we don't meet for a while.
We'll send this in, you know.
And he's not one to just cut things down. He would only take what needs to be taken.
Yeah, but I think it's a priority to get it done and try to do it now while the, if the ground sets up.
Yeah, cause. Exactly, the last meeting, it was stuck in the tree and that was over a month ago.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I would say give him the authorization. I I I would like to just see how many, just so we have that, so we can like just say, oh yeah, oh, we, no, we didn't, you know, we at least did some due diligence, but I agree with that, just an email after he gets back and then we can, you know, uh get back to you if we have any feelings on it at that point. And I think it is probably just the tips at a tickling, so he may have to go back, you know, who knows, you're right.
Well, to your point also, though, I think the flag should take precedence simply be because of when uh it's dictated by the state or the federal government to be at half mast.
Yeah.
It would cause more consternation than people's, why aren't they doing it, you know?
Yeah, couldn't agree more, I think this is just a formality and I just just to go through the due diligence of at least saying, yeah, we were told what what was actually coming down and and went from there. But we would obviously not respond all to that email that we.
Yeah, yeah.
And you may have to go a little more, just because of the flex and stretch of everything, make sure it goes back.
Sure. So I've, just so I have clear guidance, so my plan would be to have Jeff look at it, give a report, I'll send a report, if I don't get any objections, individual objections back, then we'll move forward.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
If if there's one objection, I'll bring it back to the board to talk about.
Sounds good. Okay, matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair, anything come up tonight, anybody that that has uh triggered, any questions?
Yeah, the drone flight, did they do that?
I don't know, the drone, the 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 tornado drone.
So I introduced um our drone operator to Tom, to Tom Collier's land, and they've been discussing, um but I've I've left it for them to converse.
Mm-hmm.
I'm CC'd on everything, but they're discussing when they're gonna do it, so.
Okay, just to assess the tornado damage behind.
Yeah, it's a, it's a cool idea, but it's not my land, so I've just handed it off to, there's no objections at all, so.
I'm fine on it. Okay, yeah, I know. Uh, right, uh, public press question and answer, anybody? Seeing none?
Crickets. We'll adjourn.
Quiet group tonight.
I'll second that.
I won't.
Oh, you did, sorry, there's, uh, any discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes, adjourn at seven fifty-four.